Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our special meeting. Today is June 17th, 2025. It is approximately 5:30. Sir, would you open us in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day that you've given us and this wonderful weather, Lord. We just ask you, Heavenly Father, to be in the midst of everything that is said and done in this meeting tonight, Heavenly Father. And Father, this has been weighing on all us trustees and the residents alike in making this decision. And Heavenly Father, we just ask you to be in our mind, give us your mind's eye and have us do what you would have done for your kingdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Youngest men in the room, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I didn't know if I could look at.
I didn't know, I didn't know the big one was up there.
I didn't either.
Sir, if I can...
Mike.
If I can have a roll call when you're ready?
Yes, sir. Mr. Leeser?
Yeah.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Before we move into our discussion, why we're here today, sir, do we have any unfinished business that we need to finish?
We do, Chairman. I just have a couple resolutions I need approval and signatures from the trustees. The first is Resolution 2025-086. It's a resolution approving 48 hours of injury leave for Officer George R. Myers, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves 48 hours of injury leave for employee George R. Myers for the period of 6/1, 2025 to 6/14, 2025, per Article 24 of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. And be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the High Revised Code. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions in said resolution, I'd ask for a second.
I will second it.
Here in a second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready, sir.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Sir, do you have anything else for us?
One more for you trustees. The last one I have is Resolution 2025-087. It's a resolution approving 168 hours of injury leave for firefighter Cornelius Trottin, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves 168 hours of injury leave for employee Cornelius Trottin for the period of 5/9, 2025 to 6/14, 2025, per Article 33 of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the High Revised Code. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and shall be in full force, effective immediately upon its adoption.
Sir, is all statutory paperwork have been done as deemed necessary?
Yes, sir.
With hearing that, I'd ask for a second.
I will second it.
Now that I have the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready, sir.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And that's all I have for you, Chairman.
At this time, I'm like, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Mr. Blevins.
So at the last meeting on Thursday, I called for an emergency meeting, and it's what we're having. Unfortunately, Mr. Leeser wasn't at the meeting, and I was unable to clear his schedule for tonight's meeting. And as hard as we tried to get this to come together, Mr. Leeser has a previous engagement. He did his best to get out of it, and he can't do it, and he has to be out of here by, at around 6 o'clock. And I'll take the responsibility for calling an emergency meeting, and him not being able to be here. I should have been more thoughtful and checked with him before I did it, but I thought it was important that we get this underway. So I just wanted to let everybody know that Mr. Leeser has to check out. So I think what the Board is going to do is we're going to meet at 9:30 tomorrow morning. We're going to hear all of your comments tonight and hold true to having you here. And we will meet at 9:30 in the morning, and from that meeting, we will have a decision. Is that how you feel, sir?
Yes, that's gonna be an emergency meeting. It will, the public will be able to be at that meeting. It will be here at 9:30 to hear which station that we will be voting that will be closing. I do know that you'll be able to be here till 6 to hear people.
And I will review the audio and the video after I get back from my previous engagement.
So today, what we're going to do, I asked to have us meeting out here because I figured we would have, hearing this, it's been in all the local news, a big impact on our community. I thought we would have bigger turnout. We needed more room. So we decided to hold it in the bay of the firehouse here versus in our township hall. What we're going to do, normally we have a sign-up sheet. We're not going to hear to that tonight. We're just going to ask you to keep your questions to three minutes, and we are going to listen to you. And we may comment at the end, but the key is that we want to hear from every one of the people that are here tonight so that we can make our decision. We're also going to listen to facts, figures, et cetera, from our chief, and be able then to collectively make a decision on which station it's going to be. But make no mistake, one has to go, that we just don't have the money. So when you're making, there's nothing that we can do to keep it open. We will have to put another levy on based, that's our job is to see a need, we put it on, and the voters vote. We can't tell the voters how to vote, we can't make the voters vote, but we can just show a need for our community. It could be to the point where the community says, "We only want one firehouse." I don't know that, but we're going to listen to everyone's tonight. And what we'll do is, I'm gonna start in the front row first and ask if there's anyone that would like to speak, and if they raise their hand, we'll call on you. Front row, is there anyone that would like to speak?
I'd like to make a comment. I think we should hear from the Fire Chief first so that we can have questions.
Okay.
That's just my personal opinion.
So, you know, it's a very good question. So Chief, what I'm gonna do, and I appreciate that because it only makes sense, because you need to hear the data just like we do. So Chief, if you would please take a moment and kind of go over your stats and what you've got for us.
Absolutely. So the information I pass along to the, basically, what it looks like is the FEMA has been providing the personnel to keep a second station open for six out of the last 10 years. We have a temporary levy that is five years, is past 2020. It expires the end of this year. So going into next year, we're relying on three permanent levies, one from the 90s, one from 2004, and one from 2008. So they're old levies, they don't collect a lot, and that's why we have to come back. Basically, the reason we have to shut the station down is the federal money is extended. We tried twice to get a levy to November and May of this spring in order to keep both stations running and open. Unfortunately, they both failed, so this is why we're in this position for those of you catching up. So to efficiently run one station, it basically takes seven people per day to run a firetruck and ambulance efficiently and effectively. That gives one person the ability to be off, and we maintain our minimum manning through that. So 192's up on Sullivan Avenue is a little bigger. It was always the headquarters for the fire department. It was built in the late 50s. This was built in the early 50s. That fire station up there, if you look geographically, that is in the center of the township. So if you want to serve the entire township with equal efficiency, if you run from that station, you have as far to go to Trady Room as you do down here to Alfire Road. That fire station has a capacity for eight beds. It has two bathrooms, two showers, and quite a bit more square footage. If you look at this firehouse, there's only six beds, and we're out of room at six beds. It's crowded down there. There's only one toilet, one shower, no room to expand it. If you're looking at the entire bay, and our firehouse goes straight back from here, so there's only about between 700 and 800 square feet behind here for six people to live 24 hours a day. Let's see. This station is six and a half miles on the Arrow Drive, which is the north end of our township on Wilson Road. It's seven miles if you make it to Trady and Hay. Obviously, 192's is a little closer than that. I ran some numbers. I don't know what you all find important. I know as just a human, I wouldn't want the firehouse closest to me to close, and so I would base all my arguments around, well, I want my firehouse open. So if we look at the amount of voters, because we had just short of 3,000 residents vote in November during the presidential election, 1,368 residents voted in Station 193's district, which is the north end of the township, 1,549 voted from down here in the southern half, which is this station's first district. I think I'll leave it at that. Both stations take almost identical amount of runs. I wrote down on this one. So Station 192 takes 1,300, or in 2024, the station on Sullivan took 1,349 township runs. This station took 1,434 township runs. So there's a difference of 85 there, it's about 3%. If you actually look at the run data, there's a little bit of an error in there where you're not sure which district it truly was, and it makes up for about that 3%. So they're almost identical. Each station takes about 6,000 city runs per year. Again, they're split almost dead even. So both firehouses have the same response time at this moment. They cover the same amount of township runs, the same amount of city runs. And the further you dig into the data, it's uncanny how alike the run volume and the run data is between both stations. Anything I didn't cover that you guys want to?
I think that's great. Also, when we ask questions, if you have a question, I'm gonna, Janet, start this way again. If anyone has a question for the Chief, you can ask the Chief directly. If you have a comment, we're here to listen. So anyone that would like from my right to the left in the front row?
I would like to ask the Chief first, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
So Chief, I have a few questions for you. So when you passed out your information and stuff, you're talking a number of beds for a house. So you said to us that you were going to have seven men stationed at each house and each unit, correct?
Ideally.
So I have the sheet here, and you've always had six. So why would that number go up?
Because right now with six, minimum manning is five. So if I move to one station and you still allow two guys off, which is how they operate now, both guys are coming from the same station. So I would need seven at a station to get my five minimum manning still allowed to off.
Two off?
On vacation or personal time off.
Okay. No, no.
Six injured, whatever.
Okay. And then the, when you took out Fisher Road, you said you're not gonna, when you did the runs and the calls and their comparison and stuff, you said, the firehouse that's out, you eliminated one, you said not to include them. Is it Fisher? The station for Columbus?
Yeah, I mean, there is one there, but the only one I would have excluded is 12's because it's the closest to me.
Okay.
Just for comparison.
So the one out behind the sheets does not take calls for the township?
They do.
And you included them?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I got.
Sir, do you have anything?
No, I was asked, Bob.
Okay. So I'm gonna start from my right to the left. If anyone has a question in the front row?
I don't know if I have questions, but I just kind of have a concern. Obviously, this is the firehouse that I want to stay, only because it's closest to me. But I've not been to a lot of the meetings, but I keep hearing, everything's getting annexed into Columbus, getting annexed into Columbus. Well, we have an open world here, so that Columbus probably doesn't want us right now. But I hear all the Trady stuff, all of that stuff up that way. So they're building apartments. So does that mean because they're gonna build all these apartments and that are not in township anymore that it's fair to close this station opposed to that station, knowing that probably more and more runs are gonna be all taken to Columbus out of the township if we were to keep that? So I mean, because in all honesty, you know, if I'm sitting here needing a fire medic or whatever, and you got all these apartments that are gonna be going up, you guys are gonna be taking those runs away before anybody comes to my house from the township or something. That's just my point of view on it.
Well, this is good for me.
So that's, and I guess if you want my vote, my opinion, I want this one to stay. I understand that the guys have to stick to top of each other, but I do understand.
Okay. Thank you. Anything?
I've got a couple questions. If this was closed, is it gonna affect the sheriff's next order at all?
No, no.
All right. And I do live on this side of town, and I would prefer this station to stay open too. And I do understand her point. I work for the county, and also I see that everything's getting annexed, and it's pretty much not right because you're losing all, we're losing all our money because of annexing everything in the city. And all that money is going into the city and not to the township.
Correct.
So we're getting...
Your, go ahead. We have someone that wants to try to get in. Dave, can you go around? Yeah. Go ahead, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I'm just saying that I know that the city is like trying to take over the whole township and even the county.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is we have to, it has to stop somewhere.
Absolutely.
We bought, me and my wife, she's lived here all her life. I've lived here predominantly most of my life, and I stayed here because I like the township. I don't want it to stop.
I will comment at the end on how the past levy would have stopped some of that, or we were to continue to get funding even if it would have been annexed by the township wide levy, but we'll go on.
You have a question. If we need to close either one of them, everyone has to be closed, is it a possibility to put it back on ballot to get one of them back open again, or is this going to be permanently and no way to shut it, can we never back down?
So your Board of Trustees are responsible to, when there's a need, to put it on the ballot. So we would put it on the ballot and let the people be able to decide again. There was a little over 500 people voted out of 10,000 people. It failed by 33 votes. So that's how close it was. So we have an obligation to put it on the ballot.
I think your answer to your question is, we close a station, it's gonna be closed.
Certainly, there's no way to open it.
I believe that's gonna be what happens. That's my opinion.
Can you ask for more money?
We can't get one, we can't get one levy passed, so, and you, Janet brought up a great point about annexation, and then you agreed with her that the pot's shrinking. And so this is just one trustee's opinion. I didn't even want to go down this line tonight. This is about informing you that a, no, I'm not saying that to you. I'm saying that for, we're trying to get the information out that there's a firehouse that's going to close. There is a time and a place for the next meeting to talk about what we can do to maybe get a firehouse opened back up and put on a new levy and things like that. I'm not against any of that, but right now, tonight's meeting is about a firehouse has to close, and which one?
And I will comment at the end quickly, but I do can share a plan that would end up costing all the taxpayers hardly anything because more people, like the casino, all these places that annex would pay, but we'll get into that later.
My concern is, I would like to keep this firehouse open only for the fact of response time from the other outside fire stations. 193 is first responders for Stone Ridge, Willow Creek, a lot of the community around here. To take this one away, we're having to wait, wait for Station 10, 12, 17, all off of Broad Street. There's one off of Alfire Road that may or may not be able to come, or Jackson Township does not like to do play inside Columbus even. So that's my concern is the response time of this area and these residents here.
Sure. Okay. Anything?
Sir?
I know, looking at Channel 6, you had commented, even if the levy passes, one of the firehouses will be closed, okay? So if that levy were to pass back in May, we would still be closing one, am I correct? That's exactly how I read what you put on Channel 6.
No, because he's going to explain at the end about a township wide levy, and that's what we were trying to run. But we're so far in the red now, once we shut down a firehouse, unless we agree to go back, I didn't want to get into this tonight, go back to a township wide levy, and if that fails, then there, then like I said on Channel 6, then there's, then there is the doomsday scenario where we will have one firehouse with four men on a truck, and that's it. Me personally, as I sit here tonight, until someone can show me different, I am not willing to roll that dice. No.
Well, and then the problem here is he has, he needs seven guys. I mean, seven guys is ideal, right? It sleeps six.
Well, you can also, there, I toured this yesterday, and there are things that can be done in this building if that's what has to happen. I feel there's ways to, there's ways to fix anything.
And I mean, I talked to the police on that, and I talked to you, I mean, I have nothing against the police, fire, and township, none of that.
Okay.
But you know, when it comes down to people's money, I mean, you know, when you're paying $6,000 a year to live on the west side of Columbus and taxes, that's a lot of money, especially when unfortunately you get forced to die.
Understood.
Okay, someone have a...
Yeah, I have a question. The Chief said, talked about the voters in the area, and that a lot of the voters that voted for the levy was in this area. What do you think's gonna happen if we put the new one on the ballot and we're done with it? This one closes, you think those people are gonna come back out and vote for the fire levy again that passed?
Good question. Go ahead. Jan, do you have anything? No? Go ahead. Do you have anything? Or did you have anything?
Well, in my opinion, I live on the north end of the township. That is where the annexation is happening. Well, I feel like we need to close this station because it's only fair to all of the residents of the township if we have one that is in the middle. Because people don't realize that you not only have the north end of the township, you have a far west side, Havenwood on the back. You know, if there's new apartments going up there at western mall, you know, we need to keep 192 open. We close this one because more modern for on Sullivan, there's more room, everything else. So that's just my opinion.
Okay.
No, no, it's not that. It's you leaving in five. Go ahead. Is that it? Okay. And then who's beside you?
Cindy.
Cindy, I can't see. Cindy, would you like to say something?
No.
Okay, I couldn't, I can't see you. I'm gonna go to the back. Would you, anything? Ma'am, would you like to say anything? Yes, ma'am.
So I actually live in the city of Columbus, but this station is our first responder for our area. I live in Willow Creek. My question is, is the remaining stations still going to be responsible for taking city calls, or is that going to be cut off and it is gonna be the city's responsibility to take city calls?
Chief, would you like to respond to that?
At this time, the relationship with Columbus is not changing, so we still usually, we get the closest drop wherever it's helping from, no matter who's on the board.
Okay. Paul, would you like to ask any questions? Good to see you, sir. So we've had everyone?
She doesn't have anything.
Okay. So everyone's had, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
I have another question. Does the city compensate the township for the calls that you do take? That seems like it would be reasonable and fair. I don't know what the relationship is. Is there any compensation? Is there some type of funding from the city that would be able to support you to continue to take calls and to service? If you're, if you're struggling to service the township, to me, that would also be a idea of struggle to service the city. So if you have two calls, one comes in from township, one comes in from city, which one do you take? And how is that determined? And as a voter, you know, I live in the city, so I didn't get a choice to vote. I personally would have loved opportunity to vote in favor because you service us. And I think as city residents that have township first responders, we should have that opportunity to support whatever that, that may mean.
I've went through the whole room. Would you happen to have any questions, dear, that you may like to ask?
I'm good. I'm fine.
Okay. I'm just making sure that I've covered. Is there anyone that I may have missed that would like to ask a question or a statement?
You might ask immediately if they have.
I do have another question.
Yes.
You can say something about FEMA. Is there any other fundings coming from FEMA at all anymore, nothing?
Okay, I'll do that after I've been playing, after what I speak on. You gotta go. I'm five minutes. So what I want to do is I want to make it very simple, and I want to explain to everybody what it would have meant if the last levy would have passed. We put the same levy on three times. The first time, it went down big time by over 300 votes. Valley View used to get to vote in our levies. Valley View would only pay approximately 100 and something on a $100,000 house on fire. They were contracted by Franklin Township for due to the fire, which was approximately 30,000 a year. Is that what Valley View?
Less than that.
So now they also contract with City of Columbus, and it is mutual aid. We run in there. When the mayor at that time caught wind that we are asking to do a township wide levy, they went around and explained to people, if you vote yes on this, you're, you're gonna pay what the township people are paying, which is 10 times more. So everybody voted no, which is approximately 100 and some odd votes. The next time we went to put it on, Valley View was trying to be able to exit the township to not be able to be affected by this vote. They were still on the ballot by mistake, they couldn't go off. So if you take off the Valley View votes, the last time it ran, it was probably around 100 people that voted no. This past one, it went down by 33 votes. I am one that has been wanting to do a township wide levy for a long time. I see the writing on the wall, and a lot of us in this room are saying the same thing. If we do a time levy, we do another permanent levy, then what happens as we get annexed? We don't get those fundings. In my opinion, in the past, we should have never done any type of time levy because we're in the situation we are now. The time levy stops, the clock is done. In my opinion, a time levy is when you buy a piece of equipment, a firetruck, extension to the building or new building. to the building or new building. The voters say yes, and after five years, it's paid for, it's done. But you still have your permanent levy, so you're not interrupted with service like we are seeing now, because it's detrimental as we all sit here. A township wide levy is unique. Every levy that you have will go away, and one new one if it passes. In the past, we all got those, I don't know who it was from, we heard it was from the casino, we heard it from different people, but overnight, they got 11 by 14 saying your taxes will go up 229%. Well, they're absolutely correct, if you wouldn't take into consideration, it is illegal to keep both levies. We don't have a say. The current levy would go away, the new levy would take over, and there would be one levy, not three. We've got two permanent, chief, is that correct? Two permanent and one part, we have three, three permanent and one that is a time levy. Those would all go away, you would have one new one. And that is what we were looking at, and I think some people may got confused going, they're asking for X amount of mils, and we're already paying this. No, those would have had to go away off the books. A township wide levy, give you an example, and I forget what year it was, when we first started this, the casino, if it would have passed, would have paid 1.2 million dollars to the fire fund. We are only, by the voters, allowed to collect 5.2 million dollars. We cannot collect over that. So what does that mean? Every time someone annexes into the city, give you an example, as Brenda mentioned, up in her area, they're annexing a lot. A lot, that with eight acres, that was probably taxed valued at 30,000 dollars, is now going to be worth 3.5, 3.8 million dollars of, now think about what you pay on your own property tax. So that would still be able to come into the township, even if it's in the city. A township wide levy, it is make you, the voters have the right to be able to say yes and no. If you say yes, anyone that has annexed their property into the City of Columbus or municipality will be subject to our taxes, and they can't do anything about it. Up to 10 mil, they would have to pay. So, we would not, with all of it, if you go back to 2004, and you don't collect from 2004 forward, you, just the properties you lost from 2004 on will be noticed that they are going to have to pay our property tax too. So remember, we can only collect 5.2 million. So what looked like on paper, and some people got confused, I pay enough money, I pay over 5,000 myself. It looked like we would be paying more, but you gotta realize, a lot of these places, the casino is building a brand-new hotel. We don't know exactly what that property is going to be assessed at until it's finished. So, once the audit, not us, but the auditors assess what that value is, then we will know what we're able to collect. And again, we can't collect more than 5.2 mil. So that means everything that we would pay essentially would go way down. There are three big parcels going on, each with big properties up on the north end, eight acres here, five acres there, 15 acres there, all in the 3 to 5 million dollars in value. This time next year, we would have been collecting on those taxes of those parcels. Give you one last example, the West Lomond site is starting to be developed. Does anyone know what it is estimated to be worth once they're finished? $1 billion with a B. If you had a home, and your property tax was based on $1 billion, just the fire portion alone, anyone want to guess what that tax base would be that we would collect? 9.2 mil. Once again, we cannot collect more than the 5.2. So what does that mean? The auditors have to figure out and reduce everybody to be able to make it to the 5.2. So in essence, if this levy would have passed, as we go forward into the future, we wouldn't have to worry about if something gets annexed or something gets eaten up. When you're driving along and a new business goes up, you'd be thinking, I wonder what that's worth, because I know my property tax is gonna go down, because they're gonna be helped paying based on that value. So I just wanted to share that real quick and simple. Everybody can do their own Google search, what does it mean to have a township wide levy? And the reason a federal judge allowed that in 2004 is because municipalities are eating up townships. The only way young men are gonna know what a township, local government is, is to go to a museum, because that's what's gonna happen. It's getting to the point where it's too expensive to live in a township. What are you gonna do? You're gonna annex into the city. You can do it like that tomorrow. Anybody can. We don't have a say in it.
You've got something, James?
Another thing you can do, and this is something that I'm working on, is contact your local, your state representatives. We get, we get money from the state of Ohio for road funds, and for other items. I believe that the state of Ohio should be chipping in for your guys' safety, between police and fire. We're here talking about fire tonight, but there is money in the state budget, they're just not allocating it to local governments. And I think each, if every one of us would call and work with them, there has to be legislate, it's not a quick fix, it has to go through the, through the proper channels of becoming a bill, and going through committee and all that, but if we start now, we won't have this problem when the temporary levy or the permanent levy comes up.
But we're here today to talk about fire.
Excuse me, I'm gonna have to leave.
But if you took the same levy...
See you in the morning. Yep.
Thank you, sir. If you took the same levy and same language and did that to the police, you know what that would mean? You could double your police force for what you're paying now, and as things grow, we could add more police. So what you pay for police and fire in your, if you look at your duplicate that you get on your taxes would do this, because you have so many more entities paying. And I will answer any questions on that, because it sounds too good to be real, and I'd be happy to answer if anyone has a question on that.
Here, did you say we had to get ahold of?
I'm sorry?
Your state representative?
Your state house representative, if you look up, because of the way that our township goes, there's different state reps, and they've come to our meetings, and I have asked them intently, look at what's happening to us. One piece that I do not understand, and I would love someone to understand and to explain it to me, because I don't believe in it. You can annex into the city like that. Every two weeks, they have a meeting, they can annex. I know you've seen it, both of us seen it at commissioners' meetings. Why can't you go from the city back to the township if you so desired? You so desire to go into the city, why can't you so desire to come back to the township? All's I'm told is, oh, no, you can't do that. Why? Because you can't. So what ends up happening, if we like our local government, if you like living in Franklin Township where you have the freedoms of local government, and you can pick up the phone and call your local people yourself, it's very hard to pick up the phone and call the mayor of Columbus, but you can pick up your phone and get ahold of a trustee of Franklin Township. We have to look at our future and how we collect our tax-paid dollars, and who's gonna pay it. For way too long, we have been picking up the tab. Now, I'm gonna give you, I see a lot of faces that's lived here in the township, past trustees that are here in the audience. When the Delphite Site GM closed, it was, all of us, you know, it was what, nothing. We all picked up the cost every time something gets annexed. It's our turn to be able to reap the benefits of having a township wide levy, to be able to say, yes, you need to pay your fair share. You dined, you dashed, you chose to go into the city. To give you an example, there is no reason other than city water and sewer to go the casino, because it's a big tax base. Think of what that would have done for our township and what we pay. They had city water and sewer from the beginning when it was the Delphite Site. I know there's trustees here, past trustees, that were at the groundbreaking, and it was in the township. Shortly after starting, it got annexed into the city, because they were not going to be able to have the mighty city water and sewer. So, it's our opportunity, and as this trustee, I mean, I don't want to speak for other trustees, but to look at this on paper, we have two choices. Either we're going to roll over and just stay with one station, and we keep losing things, or we're going to say, listen, I need 33 more people to step up to the line and say, I will stand and want to see a township wide levy. I understand it, I understand that as my community may get eaten up, or has been eaten up, all of that will come back, and they're gonna pay their fair share too. The day of dining and dashing, and we have to accept it. I have been to county commissioners' meetings, and they said, not up in my house. I can't help but go to a county commissioners' meeting and say, can't you say no to the annex? No, we're not allowed to say no. It has to go. So it's very frustrating. I look at people in here now, that I know that I've been to the county commissioners' meetings with, in order to try to change the outcome. Fortunately, I was very successful with the hard work of the old Boston Market, that is staying in the township, and it's going to be, Ohio Canvas is going in there, which is going to generate approximately $300,000 to the township. Every time we lose a parcel in the City of Columbus, we're not only losing, but the county is losing too. That's what I don't understand. That's tax money gone forever. Now we have a new way to get that tax money back. So I don't know, I'm trying to make it as simple, because it is complex when you read it, but that is it in a nutshell. And if anyone has questions from the media, or anyone in this room have questions about anything we set up here, now's the time to ask.
So you as an individual's put the marijuana place in the Boston Market?
No.
You just said, ah, I said, I want to verify, I need to know.
Okay.
We're gonna start talking facts, so when you get done, I'm gonna start, so...
Sure. I was the one that went to the county commissioners' meeting, and also to the rural zoning board, and being able to speak on it, the whole board in a whole. I am not just speaking me at all, so I apologize if it sounded as if it was me solely. It could not have happened if it wasn't for the full weight of the board to vote on that to be able to keep it. That was just one example. And it is hard to sit here and just speak without making sure that my words include the other two, so I do apologize.
Okay, so, I didn't want to get into all this tonight, but since we probably have the best audience we're ever gonna have, so when it comes to this township wide levy, so Bob, I'm going to ask you to explain what it is I said earlier, in the worst-case scenario, if we run a township wide levy, and it fails one more time, you're going to go down to what I said, you're going to go down to four on a truck, and no ambulance, and there's not any, even any money in that budget for yourself, correct? And when you, we had our meeting, you told me, if that happens, why would Columbus want to extend mutual aid to the township when they're benefiting none? And for me, as a trustee, as it sits here today, I'm not willing to roll that dice. I would go back with a temporary? John said, the past nine years, why did they do it? Well, John was in office when they did it, so I guess I'm saying, why did you vote for it? I was not in office, I was here, I've only been here a year and a half, I'm new to all of this, so everything, I eat up, all the information that Bob gives me, just like that, and I am not willing to be right down two minutes away from this firehouse, and to think that now Columbus isn't coming, because we took another shot. The township wide levy failed, I'm not dead-set against it, I'm open, I'm not sitting, we weren't here to discuss that tonight. But those are the reasons that I'm speaking the way I'm speaking. When it came to what I asked about earlier, when it came to the people that are hung up on six people can only sleep here and stuff like that, we had the ability to pay overtime. So if we had six on a shift like we always have, this, this house was going to be fine if that township levy passed. There was no problems with this house. You never heard anything out of anybody about anything was wrong with this firehouse, and then when the levy failed, all of a sudden, we're gonna have seven on a unit, and this house only sleeps six, and I, it still baffles me why you need seven. And if the answer is because to give people off, you need seven, so you have enough, you could pay overtime. There's overtime in the budget. Last year, for the entire fire department, we paid $51,000 in overtime. So there are ways to get around things, and there are ways that we can change things in this firehouse, if this firehouse is the one that's chosen to stay open. I do not agree with that that firehouse is closer to the township. This, to me, this firehouse is more in the middle of the township. This firehouse was put here first, and was put here for a reason. The township did not get bigger since this firehouse and that firehouse was open. This township has got smaller, and where is the shrinkage coming from? It's coming from that end of the township. And, and anybody, especially Brenda, because she educates me all the time on that, tells me that there's a plan in place, and they're just marching, Columbus is just marching up Hague Avenue. And anybody that thinks they're gonna stop at Hague Avenue, they're not. So, you're going to put a firehouse out there, the shrinkage is gonna continue, and these people down here are gonna have no coverage. Dave, you had a question?
Oh, yeah. As a representative of the police department, this is not about what the fire department, I just want the board and residents to know how much we rely on our fire department. Our officers are going to be stressed because they're low. We will start to get sent on runs that fire runs will get, and if we are not equipped like they are, and our officers have been sick and they're doing CPR on residents, thinking, when the heck is the department gonna get here with the equipment that they need? And this is just gonna prolong that time. Or when we respond to shootings or accidents, when we'll work the CPR on a person who's critical out of an accident, we need those guys here quick. You guys have families that are out there trying, it may not be their fault, you need our firemen out here. It takes a team of first responders to get that job done. I just would like to ask the public with frank intentions, the police support them in the next one.
One last thing, if you don't care, and then I'll shut up.
No, you're fine.
We've had many people ask us, how's come you're building a new building out back here when the fire department's in dire straits? So I brought the budget tonight to this meeting, and anybody's welcome to go through it. Each one of these departments have to live within their own means. We cannot take money to keep the fire department open, the police department has their budget. That new building out there is a building for the road department. Your road department worked for 10 years in a condemned building. When I ran my campaign a year and a half ago, I campaigned on the fact that we would not have men working in a building that's condemned. That building is being built with American Rescue money, and stuff like that. But anybody that's here tonight, or anybody that can hear my voice, if you want to see the budgets, I have them, 2025 budgets right here, and you're more than welcome to get ahold of me and see the budgets, but that building out back has absolutely nothing to do with the fire department. We could not put that money into the fire department. So, I just needed to have that said.
Yeah, that building was not built with the funds that we collect from your tax base, it came from the, basically, I'm gonna break it down to COVID money from back when we were able to receive certain monies that came from that era, and then we had to use it in certain different ways to improve. So we did put that money into a new building, because of the need and the age of the building that was so tore down. One of the biggest things that we're hearing today is a need. We definitely need a need for our community, and it saddens me that only 500 people voted, and we have approximately 30 people here tonight. I really was hoping to have more turnout for our community. But we will, you know, as my job, as your job, and as a resident, as a resident, this input, we have to make a decision with this tomorrow morning at 9:30. So I'm gonna ask if there's any last questions, and then we're going to adjourn.
Not a question, I just have something I'd like to say. About the vote tomorrow, I hope that the trustees will think about what everybody said in this room, how important this fire department is. The only thing I'm worried about, we have two trustees that are in the area of 192, we have one trustee that's from 193. So I just want you to put your heart into it, and make decisions for all the people in Frank.
Can I address her, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm your trustee that lives in... I'm your trustee that lives in this area, and I want to tell you that I have full confidence in my fellow trustees that they're going to make, they're going to go home tonight, it's the same as I am, and think this whole thing through. And I've worked with these gentlemen, and I'm surprised how well I've worked with them, and if things have gone well. And so I want to say to you, I feel they will put the township first and foremost. I think you know where I lie. So, and I don't lie that way because of where I live. I lie that way because I am the one, Bob can attest to this, I'm the one that got onto these sheets right here about how many people voted, correct? I'm the one that started mapping out how much time it took to get from each firehouse to get this area, to get everything covered, did I not? And so I have thought long and hard, and I didn't come into this with a decision. I actually had hoped that there would be many people come from all areas of the township and come to this meeting. But let's not forget, we had a meeting at 4100 Sullivan Avenue about home rule, and we read the room, and the room didn't want home rule, and we put home rule on anyway, and home rule failed. And so read the room.
And I can say, as a trustee that lives up north, I'm not looking at what's closer to my particular area. As I said, I wanted to see that there was more people, more that would have came out for this. I have spent a lot of time going out where the things are being annexed. Each of us do stuff that are different. Mike has put a, Mr. Blevins has put a lot of work into the data and the work. I put a lot of time in going out to where meetings are and they're going to be annexing. I stand up and speak. I've had residents have worked with me on that, and I worked with them. We've held them off for over a year before, and we've actually changed the scope and the size by attending these meetings and basically speaking at these meetings and telling them what they're going to do. There's an area called Britton Avenue. Beautiful, one-lane road goes down country, they said, some of them sit on eight, nine acres. Now we're going to have three-story apartment buildings right there. And it's sad because one person immediately sold their place and got out where they could. The rest of the people, it's going to be right up against us. And since the new zoning codes went into effect this year, that changes how far from the boundary lines that they can actually go. So I have worked intently. Each of your trustees work on something that is different, which is great. We've all worked together well, we come together, we respect each other, and then we listen to what data each person has. And for this, Mr. Blevins has really put a lot of work into, which is going to, taking out the human part of, I'd like to have it by my house, but what is going to be essential for everybody? Which is going to be the essential to which ones have the most runs, et cetera, and the data so that when someone's having the worst day of their life, we can be there? So if there's no other questions, I'm going to adjourn. I'm going to ask if there's any other questions before so. Yes?
I just want to make a statement. I don't know how many people are aware of the actual history of the townships. Franklin Township is the very first township in the entire state, which the men that were involved committed to it and created the first capital of the state of Ohio, which was Franklinton. And it came from right here. And people need to think about it, that without townships, specifically Franklin Township, there wouldn't have been a state of Ohio.
Thank you very much, and we don't want to see it lose. We all can take the information that you heard here, share it with your neighbors, and we will, we welcome you to our meetings. It's usually either 12 o'clock on the second Thursday, excuse me, it's always on the, it changes on the dates. We have them two times a month. If you check our website, you'll be able to see it. The first one's at 5:30 in the evening of the month, the second one is at 12 o'clock noon. This conversation and what we're going to do come November is the next business of order that we got to come to. So with that being said, we are now adjourned. It is approximately 6:26. Thank you all for coming out.